For March 25th, 2024 to order. And our first item is a joint study session between City Council and Economic Development Committee, and I'm calling that meeting to order.
Hi, Chris.
Um, sorry. I will remind the audience.
There's so many people out there. Um, to please put, to please put the placard up on your window because you want to make sure that your car does not get a ticket. It's really important. So, um, will the clerk please do the roll call?
Start. Councilmember Bowles, here. Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Beer, here. Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, here.
Mayor Votolos, here.
And for the Economic Development Committee members, start with Lauren Smith.
Here.
Greta Sieglock.
Here.
Ed Ochi.
Here.
Archie Juden, absent. LJ Jones.
Here.
Matthew Doertie.
Mr. President.
Brendan Berman.
Here.
Robert Foster, Vice Chair.
Here.
And Shawn Thompson, Chair.
Here.
Okay.
Hi.
Um, Tara Schiff, Economic Development Manager, will present a staff report with Yulia Carter, who is the Assistant City Manager. And the presentation will be on the screen.
I'm going to ask Economic Development Manager Tara Schiff to deliver a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council Members. My name is Tara Schiff, and I'm the Economic Development Manager with the City of Pacifica. I'm delighted to be here this evening with the Economic Development Committee members. And we wanted to go through why we are here. We're here for a joint study session, and it's regarding the Economic Development Committee Charter revision. So just to give you, um, we're going to go through an agenda, and we'll have the background first, and then we'll go through the committee's survey that was distributed to all the committee members. And then we'll recommend, we'll show the recommended charter revisions, and then we'll give final tips and takeaways. So the background, the City Council's Priority Work Plan for 2324 included a review of City Commission and Committee charters, which included the EDC. Staff launched an online survey to seek EDC committee members' input. We distributed those to all the committee members. The committee discussed the survey results at a regular EDC meeting and recommended bringing forward the amendments to the EDC charter for the council's consideration. Uh, and the EDC was created in 2013 to bring a community perspective to the economic development program with the following objectives. Work with its economic development division and program, the community and visitors in the identification of new businesses that fill a neighborhood business market gap. Provide a forum for exchanging ideas, education, information, and addressing the business and economic needs of the business community and its residents and visitors. And reach out to the business community residents and visitors to promote business development and support the implementation of the city's economic development plan. The committee survey. So as I mentioned, a committee survey was distributed on January 30th, 2024. It consisted of 17 questions, um, and it was distributed to all of our Economic Development Committee members. The responses were gathered and then summarized in a report. They requested charter revisions, and the charter revisions were, um, put together based on the summary of the report and the answers of the questions. So the first charter revision, and we discussed this at our last EDC regular meeting, uh, the EDC members decided that the first charter revision would be that for membership, the residents of the City of Pacifica, um, all members should be residents of the City of Pacifica. And they could, it would be great if they possessed knowledge of business and/or local economic development, and we definitely want them to have a passion for the local community. And the other charter, another charter revision that, um, was recommended was that the EDC and this is membership-related as well. The EDC will consist of the city manager or designee, uh, at least one city council member as liaison, and nine community members appointed by the city council, plus one non-voting ex officio member is designated by the Board of the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce. And where that difference, um, is, is in the old charter, there were nine community members appointed, and one of those voting members was a regular voting member designated by the Board of the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce. So where that's changing is there will be nine community members appointed that will be voting, plus one non-voting ex officio member designated by the Chamber of Commerce. The committee may be provided with additional opportunities to provide input on the economic impact of development within the city as requested by the council. And final tips and takeaways, um, more staff time on providing the following in '24 and '25. We'll be working on the following and working with our EDC. We definitely want to focus on discussion on the city's economic development program and how the EDC work plan can supplement that. I'm planning to have, to schedule a, um, work plan discussion and planning meeting in July that I want to work with all the EDC members. We'll have additional training on the Brown Act, committee members' roles and responsibilities and city operations, and we definitely want to develop onboarding materials easily accessible to all committee members. And that's it. Any questions?
Anyone with questions? Counsel? I don't see any lights.
Um, I could ask some questions.
Okay. Please.
Um, sorry, I'm not, I'm not all fully organized, but, um, 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 one, I, so I, I just read, uh, seeing the staff report, the Commission and Committee Handbook, which I hadn't actually read before, um, and it did leave open the possibility of people serving that weren't residents of the city if they had particular skills or expertise. And I was just thinking, you know, like, like some of our business owners here, um, I'll give an example, like the owners of the Chit Chat that own two restaurants. If they wanted to serve, but they don't live here, I mean, I wanted to make sure you were, that was really your intention, to exclude what was just residents and not, not necessarily, you know, other, other people with, that might have specific skills to bring.
I can try to answer that.
Okay.
So our understanding was that you did have to be a resident of the City of Pacifica because there was, there was a member of the committee that moved, and, and that person was asked to leave the committee as a result of their move. So I don't know where the rule is stated, but that was our understanding after discussing it with staff, or staff brought that to us. So maybe a takeaway to try to figure out what the answer to that is?
Um, like, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it might be, you know, up to you and what, and what you want, whether you want to be a specific.
If we could change, if we could change that.
Right.
Anyone else?
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, I don't know if that's something that we could change, like, in a vacuum, like, for our committee specifically, because if we were to open it up to other, like, just generally business owners in Pacifica, that leaves open for other committees, the option for non-residents to be like, well, I come to the beach, I could be on the beautification committee. So I think keeping it tight to residents, um, makes, makes sense kind of across the board, unless there were to be an overall change to the way that the committees for the city are, are formed.
And I think that was in the city charter for commissions and committees, for all commissions and committees.
The handbook has an exception, yeah.
And the exception was in there.
Right. Can I comment?
Yes.
Is it okay for me to comment?
Yes.
So I do think that there was some conversation about that, just a little bit of conversation, right, that when, um, we talked about it during the meeting, and it was discussed that maybe business owners can be invited to attend the meetings, right, if they're not residents, but they, they can still have, like, public comment and opportunities for input.
Anyone else?
Okay. Uh, while we're on the topic of criteria for selection, um, I looked at B possesses knowledge of business and/or local economic development, which generally I'm in agreement with, I wondered if there's a context under which, um, maybe, say, there isn't a robust, uh, application pool for a particular round of applying to be on committee, and you have somebody who, in general, um, as a consumer, a resident, but a consumer rather than a business owner, somebody with less knowledge but a great deal of desire to contribute, totally in alignment with C, have a passion for local community, but their knowledge base isn't the strongest, but they're really eager to learn and share their perspective as a consumer rather than a business leader. Are these proposed as hard and fast rules, or would there be some flexibility to say, well, maybe they don't have quite the knowledge base we would want, but we think they're going to do everything they can to work toward the common good? That's allowable under certain circumstance.
Okay. What does other people on the committee think about that? What do?
Yeah, um, so I think when we originally structured this, like, possessing knowledge of business, there's no hard and fast test of what that needs to be, um, but I think everyone, to some degree, has some idea of businesses operating in the area, maybe even their own local needs that they need from a business. And so I think everyone, to some degree, has some idea of local economic development ideas and some kind of knowledge about that, but I think we also want to leave it up to the committee at their discretion to be able to weigh these factors in determining the ideal candidate for this committee.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that, um, as a council member appointing to this committee, I'm always keenly looking at who's a business owner. So if I'm right, there's three of the nine presently on the committee that are Pacifica business owners. Is that right? I think so, yeah.
I also wanted to ask, we've, we've been talking about youth positions on some of the other committees, the, the library, um, emergency preparedness is having this discussion too, um, and just wondering if you would ever consider or want a high school student, um, you know, to serve who has an interest in business and, and maybe some skills to offer. And if, if you do, um, the, the current committee and commission handbook only talks about terms of four years, and so in some of the discussions with other committees, we've been, um, changing that to just be one because it's hard for a high school student to commit longer, you know, with their workload in college and so forth, but, um...
That's interesting. Yeah, I mean, I, I would be in favor of looking into that, but I, um, I don't know about if they're, are they a voting member on those other?
They are.
They are voting members?
Mm-hmm.
That's interesting, yeah. I mean, I would say it's something we can look at as a committee, but the reason why we have, um, like, in the second section regarding the, um, Chamber of Commerce as an ex officio member, um, we've found that having, we, we've opened it up for accepting other ex officio members as well. That might be, you know, in line with a really great resource and committed to coming to the meetings, but not, has to be at every meeting to meet quorum, and that's one of the reasons why now it's, uh, you know, nine committee members that are, community members that are appointed and there every single time, so we can get more accomplished. That was one of the problems that we've been facing, so, um, but I, I completely agree with you. If there's a, like, a business owner outside of Pacifica that may live outside of Pacifica, or other groups in town that are, like, key stakeholders, um, they might be a great resource for us, and then they can always be designated as an ex officio member, but regarding a youth, um, position, I mean, it's something we could talk about for sure.
Councilmembers and committee members, um, just wanted to call attention to, um, the Pacifica Municipal Code regarding eligibility for committee and commission members. So, um, just to consider that, um, if there's something that's, um, we move forward with that is not within the context of the Pacifica Municipal Code section as it's currently stated, um, it may require, uh, an ordinance to amend that section. Uh, membership eligibility for committee and commissions is stated to be, uh, membership on, this is Section 2-2.103 in the Municipal Code. Membership on the commissions provided for in this chapter shall represent a broad cross-section of the entire community. To be eligible for appointment to any committee or commission, a person shall be a qualified elector of the city except for the following persons. Members who are under the age of 18 years at the time of appointment, provided however they shall be residents of the city. And two, members of committees who are not qualified electors or residents of the city, but who may be appointed by the council where they are deemed to be able to provide expertise or where they may be representative of a section of the community, for example, commercial. So there is allowance in the Municipal Code currently for, um, youth members under 18 and also for, um, non-residents.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd love to comment on that. Uh, thank you for bringing that up, I really appreciate it, and I think if, if we're going to be talking about that, then maybe we should talk about it across the board for every committee and commission instead of, like, piecemealing it, you know? So if we're going to be talking about youth seats, I think that would be a good thing to do. I also think that we should be, um, making sure to include our Director of Park Beaches and Recreation in those conversations. And also, I had one more. It's gone now.
Advisory Board?
Yeah, oh, that was it. Maybe there can be liaisons from the Youth Advisory Board, too, um, to give those leaders an opportunity. So I think there's a lot we can talk about, but I, I would rather talk about it as a whole instead of pick which committee or commission.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, I just, I just wonder if sometimes some committees might not want a youth for some reason, and I would, but...
Well, that would be rude.
Or, or, I mean, or, or limit it, right, to, to one or two. I think we did that for the Library Advisory Committee, right? I mean, are, um...
I think part of the issue was, uh, quorum.
Uh-huh.
I think that's what we were thinking about, and, and that's why the terms for the youth seats were short, shorter. Um, and this particular committee has experienced some challenges where, where quorum's concerned. So I think the big adjustment that Director Schiff was explaining about having the, um, Chamber of Commerce seat not be a voting but be ex officio.
Right.
Um, is probably a good place to start with our work on quorum. I, I can say, as, um, a council liaison, attendance has been amazing, um, among all of the current members. Here they are. So, yeah, I think there's always opportunities to bring youth in through the means that, um, councilmember brought forward, because those means exist all the time for the city.
Especially Youth Advisory Board, including our...
Uh, oh, this is on, okay. Um, I also wanted to add, we have many, many volunteering opportunities through the work that EDC does for youth to participate, or anybody to participate. And I guess, uh, what the, what was just mentioned was that people who are under 18 are already allowed technically to join, so, um, I think, yeah, I don't know if there's ever been any applications for people under 18, but if there are and they were turned down, then, um, maybe we could reconsider those people, but I, I don't, I don't know that we need to make a change per se. Um, I feel like the longer terms are nice because it does take some time to get your feet under you and figure out what are the, like, valuable opportunities to go after as an EDC member. And also, a lot of the things that we're trying to do now are, are actually, like, pretty long-term plans, like, we kind of have, like, a, you know, multi-year vision for how do we, you know, change Blues and Brews, or how do we make Pride bigger, or how do we, uh, make changes to Shop Pacifica? So I think there's, there's, there's value in a longer term so that you know you can kind of, like, take an idea and see it through. So I would be, uh, lightly opposed to shortening the term length, but not, you know, majorly.
Thanks.
If I can just add to what Brendan was saying, um, we do have a lot of programming, volunteer opportunities for youth already. I remember also, I think it was Mary, you had, um, an intern who was really involved last year in Pride, and I think those kind of, like, doing it more, um, just the de facto opportunities we have are already effective for everyone, and there's no need to make a, a, like, an actual legal change to our, um, our charter whatsoever. But I will say, it would be great if we could get more kids involved in these event finite activities, and I think, um, Mary's connection with the, the Youth Advisory Board and getting, like, I know we already have Pride volunteers in the mix, but I think there's no reason we can't get them more involved.
And I also think the conversations, especially when we were talking about the Library Advisory Board, it was, is the voting seat, right? So eventually, it would be really nice to have young people voting on, on all of our committee and commissions, but I think it's going to take time for us to, uh, structure that, and that's an, I assume, another discussion for another day, right? City Manager Woodhouse?
Well, I, I was told that we, I mean, the Commission and Committee Handbook will need updating after we're done with all the committees, and, and so that might be a spot to, to do that as part of that process.
So maybe if I can add one more, um, youth, uh, have a, like, equal, uh, impact of changes to, like, the beautification of the city, like, they experience the city the same way that adults do, and they experience going to the library the same way, and perhaps, like, more than many adults in the city do, whereas they aren't as involved in business ownership nor necessarily, like, patronizing businesses. So I think there's a little bit of, like, there are a few, uh, committees or commissions which makes more sense, and I think the ones you mentioned, Commissioner Bowles, are, 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 um, some of the ones where I think it would very much line up with, like, uh, the goals of those commissions and the people benefiting from the work those committees do. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was thinking about that, too. I, I can see it on certain committees and not on others because, like you said, most youth have not had much experience in running businesses, um, getting people to come, but they might be interested in say, you know, I'd really like this business to be in Pacifica, and the rest of the youth would like to see something like this. I know it's hard to recruit businesses, but it might give a different perspective that other people hadn't thought of.
And there's no stopping a youth from starting a business either.
Right.
I mean, you could have some people that are really interested in the community. Um, I, I wanted to ask one, one question of, of Tara, and maybe I, I misunderstood you, um, um, oh, shoot, where did I write it down? You, you mentioned something about, um, the committee, um, opining on economic input on development?
Yes, that was one of their requests, was that, um, they could have more input, um, on economic development.
Okay, economic development, not project development that might include businesses?
But economic development that could include projects and could include businesses.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to understand. So if, if a developer's coming and building a mixed-use building with some retail, like, how, how do you see your committee being involved?
Uh, I, I see our committee being involved, um, really on a whole, you know? I, I think they would like to be more knowledgeable about what we're doing and, um, have more input on what we're doing, and, um, you know, we can certainly include them on and be very transparent on all the projects that we're doing, so that they're very knowledgeable.
Yeah, let me chime in a little bit. We discussed, uh, at the meeting, we discussed that EDC is advisory board to the council. So if you notice in the staff report, we added specific language, as requested by the council, if you refer any specific projects for economic impact back to the EDC, they will weigh in on specific projects, or specific initiatives, or specific development-related projects for economic impact. So it's going to be from the council, coming from the council when you ask for specific input from the committee.
So, so how does that work in practice? Like, we, it would have to be something on the agenda, is it just once a year when the committees come to present to us and present their work plan?
I think the concept would be that when the city is confronted with a significant development project or a, uh, plan, a specific plan, during the engagement, public engagement process that the council usually undertakes and, and discusses to guide that, that project, or whatever milestone a specific project comes to the council, the council could say, well, this has significant, uh, economic development, uh, aspects to it, and, and we'd like the expertise of the Economic Development Committee to review and weigh in on that. It would be like, like you can do for any commission or, or committee, you can direct a piece of work to that commission or committee at a point in time. And so it would be on a case-by-case basis where the council wants the committee to review the economic portion of a project.
So we, so we would agendize something for discussion first among the council to make sure there's three of us that, that agree?
Yeah, correct, or, or maybe it's something that's already agendized because I'm bringing to you, here's what the public engagement plan for the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Residency Project, what we're recommending, and the council says, well, this has economic impact, so we, we'd like the EDC to just take this up at such and such a point in time in the, in the project schedule.
Okay. So I just, as another example, because we're having this discussion, um, with, like, OSPPAC and other committees, too, like, the quarry specific plan, so you mentioned specific plan, so, you know, there might be a hotel and, and other developments. So at, this is the city project, not the developers' project, that, so the city would engage, if we chose, with economic development to provide input as we're developing that plan.
I don't think it necessarily should be limited to only city projects, I think that may be a good, um, set of things to look at, like, capital improvement projects, there's a long list, we get to, you know, not many of them every year. The prioritization process, I don't know what it is today, but like, there are certainly some which are more economically beneficial and others which are less. This, uh, committee could provide it, our input on what we think would be more or less economically, um, beneficial to the city, and the city could then use that knowledge however it chooses, uh, or, uh, as, uh, City Manager mentioned, like, large projects that are going through the, um, Planning Commission and the, the council. You know, I think there are many people who are very happy to provide, uh, a voice for, you know, keeping the city open and, and, and green and, um, kind of, uh, but I think that there are less people writing a voice towards, like, economic development and benefit to the city. Uh, so, you know, at, at your request, as stated in here, if you would like a view of this committee on what we think the economic impact might be, we could help provide that. And then even beyond just development, uh, you know, I think less frequently, but still in some cases, there might be, like, code changes or, um, you know, changes to language that you are, are making, and again, those, uh, you know, there's a lot of nuance in the wording choices, and, and maybe, um, wording something a different way would, would lead to a easier environment for people to develop in the city, so, like, attracting businesses. Certainly, businesses can be scared away by certain language showing up in, in...
Yeah, if I could add one more thing, I think the intent to add this in here was really just a reminder, since you, you really had this all along, but it was just a reminder that you have this wide skillset sitting around the table that you can call upon that are, you know, maybe a business owner or have a like large media skillset that you're not maybe around the table with every day. And you can kind of put feelers out there for some of us that have that skillset that might be worthwhile to, as a touch point in some conversations. So it was really just a reminder that we're here and we would love to provide some more additional feedback. And you have to remember, too, like, we're not only like walking the streets every day, but we have relationships with like students or community members, you know, that on a regular basis that we're conveying new projects and, and stuff, too. So it might just be worthwhile to, you know, tap us as a resource.
Right, okay. I, I just want to add that, I mean, I appreciate, yeah, your talents and resources that I, that I don't have, but I might not always, and I'm not the liaison, so maybe this is, you know, a question for the liaison to, you know, to be educating you on what the city is working on. And then you all can opine in your meeting, we might be able to help with that, right? So, so it's not just from us to you, but from you to us, too.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that at 6:36, we might want to see if there are any public comments before returning for whatever other questions we have and ultimately deliberation.
Mayor Vardalas, before we just leave that recent topic, I did want to make sure to be clear about one nuance to this. As the council recalls during the discussion of the OSPAC Charter, when we're talking about review or input on private development projects, that is, is a very legally nuanced topic, limitations on the amount of public meetings that the city can require, due process issues that need to be concerned. So I just wanted to point out that it is a very different realm of discussion and a more complex one when it comes to referring private development projects to a committee or commission. So I think the intent here is more the general awareness about economic development input and particularly related to city projects and city activities where there's not that same private development process limitation.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Go ahead, Sue, and fill out the card, of course.
Hi, thank you for being here. Yeah, so I'm sorry I'm late, you know how life circumstances can make you late sometimes? So I may have missed something about whose eligibility to be on commissions. Personally, I feel that it has to be a resident and it has to be somebody who can vote. The other thing is getting the word out and about teens, too. So in the history of Pacifica, this site right here, we had a lot of community involvement, a great deal of output and community input. But the powers that be at the time chose to go over the business. There was a hotel conference center that did not dot all its i's and cross all its t's, as did the citizen group. And they were going to build, it was Swenson, very good name. They were going to have a hotel conference center here. You notice, that was in 1999, there's no hotel conference center. But the citizen point was for a Pacifica Ocean Discovery Center. And all the i's were dotted and all the t's were dotted according to the planning developer. And we had a lot of supports from other agencies, including the ones that exist in San Francisco, all the way down to Packard and Monterey. The other thing for teens, it was actually a teen group that got together and won for us. They, commute.org said the teen group here in Pacifica did the best survey. They created the best survey, they set it out the best, and they got the highest return of the survey than anybody in their experience, I forget his name, David something. So we actually did have the gold shuttle. And the problem with that is ridership died. So hindsight on that, as a council member at the time, I would say, we need to handhold and make sure that when we win something, such as a shuttle in Pacifica, which, you know, was highly, you know, acclaimed, and that was, teens did that. It was called Teens Are Unbelievably Strong Together. And we lost it because why? So maybe we weren't, we, and we had a chamber at the time, maybe we weren't as careful at following that the ridership actually continued. And so, you know, all of a sudden, you wake up one day and it's gone because ridership. So, and then the chamber got one, same thing happened, ridership. And on that one, I would say signage, signage is important. So we had signage, I was on council and I pushed for signage, we got signage. But it was the size of a street sign, and in front of the chit-chat on the pier, the sign was yay big, you know what I mean? And so the shuttles were going by with two people in them. You're, you're not going to keep a shuttle at that. So yes, it is easy to get our teens, it's issues, it's issues, it's issues. And the community, this community has wonderful ideas and they want to be heard. So I caution with all committees that we're very careful about hearing the actual residents and citizens more than anybody. And the other thing is, look at what happened with the quarry last meeting recently. Why was there such a big turnout? How we get the word out? If we rely only on, online, it's not going to work.
Thank you, Sue. Is there anyone online? I mean, on the phone? Okay, seeing no more people in the audience, I'll bring it back. Oh, it's a study session. It's a little different. Anybody else have questions? I see no one. So I guess that's the end of our study session. Thank you all for being here, we really have.
I was going to say no more questions, but do anybody have comments?
Oh, go ahead, comments.
I don't, but.
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight. It's like a pleasure to sit around the table with you, I've learned so much. And you all see us at the, the day after our council meeting. So like, we're in council till 1:00 a.m. and then we come to see you and we're like, ugh. So forgive us for that. And I just want everyone out there to understand that this group is extremely engaged. And it's, it's going to do our city so much good to have you. And so I, I really just wanted to say that I appreciate all of you and that I'm learning so much from each of you.
I concur. I served on economic development for, I don't know, four years, six years, eight years? And we didn't get nearly the things done that you guys do. So I really appreciate it, having served. I mean, we did very little, and you guys have done a lot.
And Tara, it's so nice to have you on board.
Yeah, thank you.
And Alyssa's support. And, and I just want to add that, I mean, we're talking about our budget later today. And we've always been a city that's really struggled financially, right? We don't quite have enough businesses and, and all the residential doesn't quite pay enough in taxes to support all the services that the city needs. So your work is actually like some of the very most important in the city. And, and yes, we're very grateful for you all serving and looking for creative ideas to, to build our, our tax base, but also, you know, to provide services to the people that live here and, and to attract more visitors. So thank you.
I'll continue the echo of thank you to everybody. You know, I used to try and show up after a council meeting and it is amazing the work that you all do. And I appreciate the conversation about the possibility of a youth ex officio member. And of course, I defer to Mary as I think she has the leading expertise amongst us all closely, by Mayor Protem Beckmeyer. I'm wondering if City Manager feels like you have direction or if there is further direction that you need from us?
The direction that I'm hearing is support for the recommended changes to the charter, that the, there's no change regarding youth membership or anything at this point in time. And we'll bring back a resolution that memorializes what's in the presentation at a future council meeting for adoption.
Charming, thank you very much. And thank you, committee, for being here.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, we will adjourn the study session.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bowles?
Here.
Councilmember Big Stick?
Present.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Present.
Mayor Vardalas?
Here. And I would like to remind the people in the audience to please pay, place a parking pass in your windshield so that you don't get a ticket. We would never want to see anyone get a ticket who attends a council meeting. Okay. And I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that the, they, wow, that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatoush Aloni people, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatoush Aloni people for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatoush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caregivers of this place, as well as for all people who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatoush Aloni people. And I would like to invite Mayor Beer to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with the consent calendar, there are four items. Are there any council members who wish to pull any items from consent? Christine?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item two.
Any other council members wish to pull anything from consent? None? Are there any questions about any items on consent from council members? Seeing none, are there any?
Sorry, we did get one public comment about a date error in the minutes. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
You're correct. We had a public comment regarding a date that was in the future, that was said to be in the past. I mean, was something that was held in the past.
Interconnectivity of the time-space continuum notwithstanding, it's probably a good idea to make that correction for the sake of linear time appreciation.
Packet page 57, I'm just reading Chris Redfield's email. Staff report stated a meeting was held with staff and neighbors on March 29th, '24, which obviously has not happened yet, so maybe that was February or?
Oh, it was the meeting about the Minerva trees, is that?
Well, that staff had a meeting with the neighbors, not with the public meetings.
Right. A staff meeting with the Minerva trees, so.
That's what he says, I haven't looked for it.
Is it in the staff report or it's in the?
In the minutes.
In the minutes.
That, that's not the right page number. No.
Yeah, no way.
Okay, so can we just have that corrected later? Because we don't know the actual date.
And it does appear that Chris Redfield is on the Zoom call, so he might be able to offer a clarification if he wishes to give public comment.
I think I'll ask for the public that's here first and then I'll come back to Chris. Is there anyone in the public who would like to discuss any item that's on the consent calendar? Seeing no one come forward, Emily, can we have Chris?
He's been allowed to talk.
See if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Yes, that was just. And it said post-held the meeting with the Minerva residents. But obviously, that date was in the future, so it was just a simple clarification of a date. I'm sure the date was either supposed to be 2023, or could have been February or whatever it was. But it was an incorrect date in the minutes, just a simple clarification. And I thought that was referenced on Packet page 57, but going back through, I could obviously mistake it on that.
Okay, thank you for catching that. So I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to council. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda minus item two.
I second.
Please vote.
Are we making the correction to the minutes?
Yes.
In addition to making the correction in the minutes?
So does the motion need to say with a date correction to the minutes regarding Minerva trees?
Yeah, that, that direction has been given, so staff will.
Direction has been given.
So we don't need to.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, look, I pressed the wrong button.
I know.
Where we are? Should we do it again?
Sorry, I didn't see any lights on the votes. Uh-oh, it's not plugged in. Sorry about that.
Everyone, please vote.
And ignoring that no on top next to no name, the motion passes unanimously.
That's interesting. Okay. Christine, would you like to talk about item number one, number two?
I do. And I just want to raise a, a process question to start with. So I, I went back and, and watched the recording from our joint study session with OSPAC. And, because I was remembering that we had given clear direction that, you know, the meeting was running late, we were kind of rushed at the end, and we had wanted to come back to continue the study session with them after, you know, they had time to go and think about some of our comments and how they wanted to move forward. What I didn't remember, which I, you know, it was jogged my memory by watching it again, was that, so after we'd all said yes, we wanted to do that, City Manager Woodhouse suggested that, you know, it might be that OSPAC doesn't need to come back to us, right? So we were, and Tiger was leading the meeting, that, you know, it was their choice of whether they wanted to come back or not. It could, but the item, instead of a study session, it could come back under consideration, but making sure that we had a representative from OSPAC here and/or inviting the whole group if they all wanted to come so that we could have a robust discussion. So that's what was said in the recording. And so it bothers me that this is now on consent instead of on consideration. And I, I think I've, I've talked to a few OSPAC members over the weekend and they were like specifically told, or some were specifically told not to come to the meeting today. And I don't know if any of them are here now, but what's before us is either we approve or we deny and keep the old charter, but there might still be some changes that we want to talk about and discuss. So I, I have some questions. And I, I don't think this process, the way it's on the agenda today, allows that to happen.
So what you're asking for is to look at this at a later date, not to make it an item number five on the agenda?
Correct, because I want to make sure that OSPAC is invited to be here, to be part of that discussion. And I, and I've talked to, to two members just late this afternoon and they were okay with that delay. I mean, they, they obviously want to get their charter, they've been waiting a long time to get their charter updated and they don't want to delay too long, but, but they thought a short delay, if we could get it back on the agenda, was a good idea.
City Manager Woodhouse?
Yes, Mayor Vardalas and council, thank you. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'm going to have Planning Director Murdock give some input in a second here. But my understanding was that OSPAC considered the charter amendments and voted on them, I believe unanimously, and, and with the expectation that they'd be brought to this city council meeting for consideration by the council, that they didn't feel that a joint, you know, a follow-up joint study session was necessary. I'm not aware of any. session was necessary. I'm not aware of anything about OSPAC members being told to not come tonight. Obviously, it's a public meeting, and if a consent item is pulled off the agenda, it gets discussed with public input, et cetera. But maybe Mr. Murdock has some more insight into the direction that OSPAC gave.
Thank you, City Manager Woodhouse. Good evening, honorable council members. Planning Director Christian Murdock. So the OSPAC considered this item at two meetings, had a very thorough conversation. At the first meeting indicated they needed some more time. Their subcommittee met, really went through the proposed resolution that staff had prepared, synthesizing all of the input very carefully, came back with some further revisions that staff incorporated for the most part. And after further discussion at the second meeting, the OSPAC voted unanimously to request city council adoption of the resolution that's put forth for your consideration in the agenda packet. On the subject of coming back or the need to come back, that question was posed to the OSPAC specifically, and the consensus was there was not a need to come back as a body to the city council, and they were ready to move on with the resolution that's been prepared. So there may have been varying impressions of what that meant, but as it relates to the item, they are comfortable with adopting this and moving on, in my understanding of the consensus of the group. Individual members may have their own individual opinions, but I would say those were not expressed in the OSPAC meetings that I attended on this subject matter. And as to the point about them being told not to come, that's not my recollection. The recollection was as a procedural matter, this would be a consent calendar item. There was no need for them to come. They were welcome to come. There would not be a Brown Act issue with them coming to this noticed meeting of the city council, but as a body, they would not need to come, given the process that was playing out as a consent calendar item.
And that might be true, but so as I was reading the agenda item, I had further questions. And so the people I talked to were Chair Patton, Vice Chair Arnos, and Ellen Nadeason, and they all felt my questions were good questions and that we might actually want to discuss some minor changes to their charter. But again, that's not given as an option in what's presented before us today.
And if I may, I think procedurally, there would be an issue. If OSPAC voted, and a majority is recommending approval of these changes, then that's what we're bringing forward for council consideration. If there's individual members of OSPAC that had a different opinion and perhaps expressed that to Councilmember Bowles, I would not recommend, I mean, the council can decide to continue the item if you would like, but the recommendation would be the same because OSPAC has taken action on that. So I wouldn't recommend changing that or sending it back because that's not what OSPAC directed.
But if we want to make changes, how do we do that and make sure that it's okay with them?
Council can make any changes you want to any charter for commissions and committees because it's your prerogative to do that, and the committees and commissions work at your direction.
But that would have to be brought back at a later meeting, the changes, because we're not all aware of changes that...
If Councilmember Bowles has, Denise Bizano, Assistant City Attorney, good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
If Councilmember Bowles has recommended edits to the resolution, she can propose those as she would any other resolution that's before the council, and the council can discuss those proposed changes, and if they agree, a majority could support those changes.
Okay.
And as City Manager Woodhouse said, the charter for OSPAC is within discretion of the city council. The city council gets to decide what the contents are of that charter.
And I'll add, I mean, it's the council's prerogative to send it back to OSPAC, too. You could say, well, we want you to reconsider these changes, talk about it more, bring it back. The point I'd make about that is we'll just be extending the committee-commission charter reviews process. You know, we have other ones that are, we did EDC today, but we have others that are coming forward, and so the longer we delay that. It's been a long process with OSPAC, and they voted for recommendation, and that's what's before you tonight.
And Mayor, just one other factor for the council's consideration related to perhaps sending it back to OSPAC. It's my understanding that Chair Patton, beginning in April, perhaps before the next OSPAC meeting, will be unavailable for a period of several OSPAC meetings. And so she's been central to this update process, and to whatever extent that's a factor, she may not be able to participate for, you know, April, May, potentially June.
Okay. Tiger has comments?
Yeah, I just add to the conversation. Mostly, it's already been stated, but my understanding of the process was that the subcommittee came to the conclusions they did. They brought it back to the full board, who deliberated to the point of transmittal of this consent item without need of further discussion. And so my understanding was the body's consensus was that what is before us, after a great deal of deliberation, is what their preference would be. Vice Chair Arnos did reach out to me earlier today with some of the same concerns that Councilmember Bowles is expressing, but mostly I've been working with the chair of OSPAC around any issues that might pertain to the item. And I'm sure Arlene would be here if not for the knee surgery that she's been undergoing earlier today. And Arlene, if you're out there, I do hope that you're healing well and recovering quickly. But otherwise, my understanding from the chair is that their deliberation was thorough and that there was, on a whole, satisfaction was what was being transmitted. And after that, it occurred to me the same observation that was pointed out by City Manager, City Attorney, that this is our opportunity to do whatever we want with the charter. I don't know what recommendations were made to the members, though it is certainly a publicly held meeting, and I would hope that if any member wished to come out and speak either on behalf of the board or as a private citizen, as is their right, they would take the opportunity up and be here. But this is absolutely our opportunity to ask whatever questions you might have to ask, and so by all means, take the opportunity to ask questions. And if we come to the conclusion as a body ourselves that there's alterations we would like to make, by all means.
And then we can decide if we want to have that conversation with them. I just, I just, I mean...
Specifically, it was agendized here and now, so that if we feel the need to pull the item as you have, we can discuss it as we wish.
Right. Yeah.
So Christine?
So, I mean, I can go over my questions. I kind of want to see if there's anybody on the phone, maybe from OSPAC or anybody in the audience, who wants to comment just about the process first. But...
Well, I can bring it back for a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience or on the phone who would like to make a comment?
And just to be clear, Madam Mayor, if there are any members of OSPAC on the line, I would ask Director Murdock whether or not OSPAC designated a liaison for this meeting or if they would be speaking, you know, as a private citizen rather than on behalf of the OSPAC.
They did not designate a liaison to the city council on this item.
Were they asked to?
No.
Emily?
We have three raised hands. The first is for Marion Sebo.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, do you want to go to the next person?
We'll go ahead and put Marion Sebo on pause for now. The next is Summer Lee.
Okay, go ahead, Summer.
Hi, this is Summer Lee. I am a member of the public who has wanted OSPAC to have more review of certain projects in our city, as was in their original charter, because, as you know, some of our developments come to planning commission, and the community has not had a chance to even understand them, and a lot of conflict happens. And OSPAC is the natural place to review these things with the developer and have some community present. And a lot of communities do this kind of process before projects arrive to the planning commission. So I've been paying attention to some of the changes in OSPAC and the charter and this process. So when this came up to council as a consent item, as a member of public, I've been left out of what's been happening, and I would feel like it'd be nice to have more open discussion about what this new charter is, if any changes were made, and as a member of the public to be able to comment to the council about these things. So I would love to see a little more process about this. Again, to save the city a lot of time and energy and possible, you know, conflict and dissension in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The next is Arlene Patton.
Okay, so Arlene speaking as an individual, not as a member of OSPAC.
Can you see me? It's not pretty.
No.
Can hear you but not see you.
Okay, great. All right. So I didn't hear all of the introduction, but I can talk to the process that we went through. And everybody can read the notes from our meeting last week. In terms of the kind of back and forth that we went through, we had a subcommittee that consisted of Joanne Arnos, Ellen Nadeason, myself, and Sarah Cardona. We looked, we looked at our notes, reviewed what we each thought, took in some input from our original proposed reso, and had a good discussion about where we wanted to go with this. And we did another draft, reso, gave it to staff. Staff had some additional input. And I think, you know, this process has taken us a long time. And I think it took us a while to really, both sides, really hear what OSPAC wanted, which was, you know, a little more detail when staff was doing the development updates, to ensure that letters actually, you know, went out, even though it's an invite, it's not a requirement. And just sort of taking in what we really wanted to do and make sure that we were getting enough public input. The staff suggestions were also, I think, very sensitive to the fact that, you know, when development was going on 10 years ago, it didn't have some of the constraints that we have now with the state and the sensitivity. And I think that was something we all had to process ourselves. But in the end, when we had our meeting in February, the general consensus was we felt heard with some minor tweaks. We wound up at about 90% of what we originally asked for. And at our meeting, we felt that really further effort or even coming back to council was not really, what do I want to say? Pardon my term. The return on investment wasn't there. We knew we were about as good as we were going to get, and that seemed enough. So, anyway, I hope that helps.
Thank you, Arlene. So I'm going to close the public comment again and bring it back to council. Tiger?
Thank you. A question for City Attorney. When something is put on consent, is that not an opportunity for anyone to speak on the subject?
Yes.
And perhaps you could give us a quick definition of consent, how it works, how it works in relation to it being an agendized item that thereby gives the public an opportunity to comment if they feel the need to, and for that matter, should it be polled, that it then kind of attains the status of an item not on consent and gets the more fleshed-out version that it does if it were, say, agendized as a consideration item?
Yeah, so an item on the consent calendar is like any other item on the agenda in terms of the public's opportunity to comment upon that or council's opportunity to comment on that item. And so any member of the public could come and comment on this, a consent item, in the same way they could any other agenda item. And it's posted with all the other agenda items 72 hours prior to the meeting, so the public is aware of the item. They get the same treatment as other items in terms of a staff report and accompanying documentation, so that the public can see what the item is about. So other items on the agenda, you know, may be placed in a different portion of the agenda, just, you know, based on legal constraints or the complexity of the item itself, but the consent agenda items are just as important as other agenda items.
Thank you. And then my other question is for Director Murdock, because my recollection is what precipitated this charter review, and frankly, then led to the rest of the charter reviews, like we did EDC earlier tonight, and we're in the process of reviewing all of the charters for committee and commissions. But in this particular instance, there was a notion, and frankly, I thought it was a very good notion on its face, that perhaps OSPAC could be more involved in reviewing when land in their, to use a laugh-co phrase, sphere of influence, you know, came up, perhaps there was a place for OSPAC, because once upon a time in our history, there surely was a more robust place for OSPAC to consider development in the sphere of influence of any given item in the open space and parkland report. Could you remind us a little bit of this discussion around where that, again, very, I think, good idea on the face of it notion went in terms of the robust conversation we've had since that notion has come before council and joint study sessions alone at OSPAC itself?
Certainly. And hopefully Assistant City Attorney Bizano can supplement legal points as needed. In concept, I think it can make a lot of sense and be an appealing idea to have an open dialogue with everyone present at OSPAC to go over various open space considerations related to development projects. The reality is, the development review process, of which that discussion would be a part, is a very structured process. There is a record being built, there are due process rights for applicants, and there's legal liability if the process or due process is not followed appropriately. And so, as we've outlined previously, there are a number of practical and legal considerations associated with incorporating OSPAC into the formal development review process. I don't know that I can rattle them all off contemporaneously, but some of the key points were a concern about projects coming early in the process, which makes sense logically to get input early so it can be most fully considered, but then figuring out later, once the project's deemed complete, that it may be a project that's subject to some processing limitations, potentially in terms of number of required meetings, for example. And there are various viewpoints about whether that's before or after the project's complete and when the limitations apply, but there are potential risks associated with that for the city. Another aspect is timing. With OSPAC meeting once per month relative to when an application may be deemed complete and then have an opportunity to get to OSPAC, there are practical timing considerations to get to a public hearing and review and so forth. to get to a public hearing and review and so forth. Additionally, there are just training and knowledge challenges to get nine OSPAC members up to speed on the very complex development review process, that it often takes planning commissioners who meet twice a month and consider multiple projects regularly, a considerable amount of time to gain sufficient expertise. And so, again, just in summary, a lot of practical and legal challenges associated with that change in process and something to be considered very carefully and to what extent, limited or extensive, that the OSPAC should be incorporated into that development review process.
Specifically, the state has regulated the way we must handle development to a point where, where once upon a time, we were able to leverage OSPAC to help us in that review process, from, because of various legislative changes to how state would have us operate, it's become rather time prohibitive, has it not?
I would say, generally speaking, yes, the process has become much more restrictive now as compared to perhaps 10 or 15 or 20 years ago, certainly.
Thank you.
Mary.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind folks that it was OSPAC's request that really jump-started our whole process to change the, to look at all of the charters for all the committee and commissions, so that conversation was happening when I was the liaison on OSPAC. And so, when I saw the notes tonight, I was actually really happy to see that they came to a conclusion. It was a 6-0 vote. And so, Arlene, thank you for calling in. I hope you're going to feel better fast. It was really good to hear from Chair Patton tonight. I think, yeah, I just wanted to make that comment. I don't have any questions.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I was asking mine. Arlene, thank you so much for calling in, knowing that you just underwent the knife today, and I believe you when you say if we could see you now. So, thank you for taking the time and helping us as we deliberate.
Christine.
So, I mean, I can go ahead and ask some of my questions. I still don't like the idea of doing this without OSPAC here, but I will ask the questions. And some of what bothers me is that, like, so I was asking some of these questions to the three people I talked to this weekend, Arlene, before her surgery, I wasn't able to talk to her today. And they felt I had good questions that led to other questions from them. So, my concern is if we're finalizing it, but there might be a few words that we want to tweak, you know, it may be worth taking that time to have joint input, you know, in that. So, but, anyway, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead with my questions, since that doesn't seem to be the direction that you guys want to go right now. One of the things that's not in here is about their review of city documents. There's a section on packet page 36. The be it further resolved in the resolution starts on the page right before, but then it lists five different things that are in, that they shall advise the city council on. So, just, I'm going to just read it really quickly. Policy and procedures of the National Park Service, blah, blah, and GGNR issues surrounding transfer of ownership of Cattle Hill and Pedro Point Headlands, blah, blah. Access to operation of San Mateo County parks in and around the City of Pacifica and lists some of the parks. Access to an operation of lands owned by the California Coastal Conservancy. Number five, access to an improvement in operation of open space lands owned or controlled by the City of Pacifica. And six, ways in which these areas can contribute to the economy. There's nothing about their commenting on our general plan. And I know they were asked to comment on our general plan, and I appreciate that. There's a whole open space element in the general plan. So, there's nothing in here that talks about their participation in city documents. Similarly, like we were talking about the specific plan for the quarry, the quarry is in their purview. It's one of the sites there. This isn't a development plan that we're approving. We're creating a specific plan for what we want for the quarry to be, and a lot of that includes trails and habitat and, you know, animal corridors and so forth, too. And I would want them to be involved in creating that plan. And there's nothing in here that says they would be asked to do that. So, that's a main point. And, yeah, all three of them that I talked to this weekend thought those were, those were good points that we might want to add. And Ellen gave me some specific language that I can read. But again, I don't feel comfortable, I don't know. Well, I can read it, okay. I'll see if I can.
Yeah, can I just say something really? You do your thing.
I just, I don't like them not being here and being able to have input. I mean, this is one conversation I had with one person. I don't know that it's the direction. Anyway, maybe it is.
But this is the opportunity for us to hear you.
Okay.
And then for us to discuss, and then we can decide if we want to send it back to them or not.
Okay.
So, I want you just like, yeah, go, do your thing.
Okay, thank you. So, I don't know if I can read my scribbly language, but something about, and documents generated by the City of Pacifica, including other plans and policies relevant to open space, and not part of a specific development project review. So, it was very clear, you know, what it is that we'd be adding. So, that's one thing you want, you guys want to talk about that, before I go on to other things?
It does say that, review and implementation of the general plan. So, that's in here, which covers most of the city in the general plan.
I might have, can you show me where that is?
Yes, it's on page... Thank you, on 36.
One, two, three, four down.
The fourth, be it further resolved. Okay. Okay, so, okay, so take out the general plan, but let's talk about the quarry specific plan or any specific plans for any.
Well, the specific plans relate to the general plan.
No, they don't. It's a whole separate plan. It's not part of what?
So, Mayor, to clarify my understanding of the meaning of the paragraph in question about the annual review of implementation, that was meant to be at a subsequent annual review of the general plan conducted by the city council to consider whether it's relevant and important to direct an amendment to the general plan to formally incorporate the open space task force report or other specific open space issues, so that there's a connection to the development review process through the city's policy documents that's more direct. We have much about open space in the general plan already, but something more specific to the open space task force report, that was sort of the belt and suspenders approach with bolstering the voluntary presentation opportunity, formalizing the invitation process, and then trying to formally connect development review projects through the planning commission process with an amendment to the general plan to memorialize the open space task force report. So, it's seeking to accomplish something slightly different than what I'm understanding Councilmember Bowles outlining. It would seem like a reasonable, you know, activity for the OSPAC to potentially advise on, open space issues that are pertinent in the general plan or other specific plans related to open space task force report parcels.
Thank you.
So, how would you suggest adding that language?
If I may just jump in, I think one of the points that's being danced around here, I mentioned earlier in the Economic Development Committee conversation, is that in any plan or study city project that's coming to the council, the council has multiple touchpoints to direct work of that to include committees and commissions. So, if you take a significant plan update, like the general plan in the future, or a specific plan in town, the council could say, well, this touches every committee commission in town. There's emergency preparedness and safety components, there's youth-related components, there's economic development-related components, parks, beaches and recreation, and you have the prerogative during that planning process to say, we want all the committees and commissions to weigh in. I think that it would be, if the council decided to specifically include plan review in OSPAC's charter, you're kind of setting it up so that you would include that in every committee and commission's charter as directed by council, right? Because there's going to be significant components that relate to every committee and commission. And so, it's not in charters, because the council always has the prerogative to direct that in that particular study or instance, when the council's deliberating about how to go about that process. Hope that helps clarify.
Yeah, I can understand not being specific about a particular project in here. So, I mean, we just reviewed economic development, and they had a nice sentence at the end and about other work directed by council that I don't see in here. So, maybe that would be an okay thing to add, that would encompass that.
Mary.
I actually just wrote that down.
You did.
Yeah, like, as directed by council. Because that's what you were talking about, that was like the last sentence in the economic development.
Right, other projects or priorities as directed.
And so, I heard you say, or other specific plans as directed by council.
That would be fine with me, yeah.
Christine.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Sure. So, I, we talked about a lot of things in our, in our study session with them that I don't think that they were prepared to talk about now, because they did want to get things going, but there are things that they may want to add later. And so, I want to understand what the process is by which they do that. And I, as an example, we, they had asked for other sites to be added to the list of sites in the manual. They had mentioned, like, all of HPD, and we talked about that some, and maybe that was too much, but, you know, if there are certain parcels that were adjacent to existing open space parcels or particular HPD parcels that they thought were, you know, important, contiguous things, that, you know, they could come back and tell us a specific parcel with an APN that we could then discuss. And I think they're still interested in that. They didn't have time to do all that before now, so I just, I want to understand what the process is by which they can add something coming forward. So, I asked that question, you know, written, and I'll just read the answer, because it was confusing to me, and maybe staff can clarify. So, what I asked was, what is the general process for future changes to charters, for example, adding a parcel or a task? So, the task I understand, but if we're, yeah, if we're increasing in general their charter task, so whether this would happen at their yearly committee report to council or if there's some other process. And so, the answer I got was, city council must adopt a resolution to amend the authorizing resolutions for commissions and committees. The annual commission committee report and work plan approval process is one mechanism a commission committee would use to request the city council to direct work on a specific topic. However, any such work that is directed by council must be consistent with the authorizing resolution. So, that was really confusing to me. So, they can ask for something, but not if it's conflicting with the resolution that we're adopting now.
Yep.
So, we can't change the resolution later if they want to add something else. We would, we have to wait until we do.
My impression is, if I may, to Mayor, when there's a change that is brought forward by whatever body, whether the council or proposed by the body itself, the committee, if it results in something different than what the original resolution says, it needs to come back to us with an updated resolution. We went through this with the Beautification Advisory Committee when we changed the mayor's beautification awards program. And I, at that time, thought it was, I felt bad, actually, because I felt like it was just a little change, but it was a big thing. We had to have legal review, we had to have all these things, and it's for reasons. Because, you know, there is, especially with this committee, and there, it came up a little bit in the meeting before this meeting with EDC, there are due process considerations that we have to be careful and mindful about. And so, perhaps that a committee would wish to have something added may be true, and it may also be a no, because the, either the rigor and requirement to make the change to the charter is not indicated at that time. It may be inappropriate, frankly, because it's the work of some other part of the city, such as the planning commission, such as the planning department. So, I think where I'm coming from on this is, I sense that you're trying to kind of make sure there's things in here for all future possibilities, and I think there are. It's called, the council can amend the charters at any point that it directs.
Okay.
And from my point of view, we've spent a lot of time on this, and I guess I'm just a little concerned that we're treading over ground that we've already been over. So, when you brought up the thing about, maybe there would be other parcels, different APNs in their, in the HPD, I was at an OSPAC meeting for Tiger as the alternate, and this exact issue was discussed in specific regard to their charter. And they went around the table a couple of times, and they talked about, do we want to have an update of the open space task force report?
Right.
There's cleanup that needs to be done. There's little tweaks, there's maybe parcel numbers aren't right anymore. And after discussion, they came back with a no. They didn't want to ask for that. So, at this juncture, for us to be asking for it, I don't understand why. I guess I'm concerned about, what problem are we solving that isn't already, hasn't already been addressed through our review and through OSPAC's review? Our review of their original request, way back in two years ago, goal-setting, and then their process of going through it a few times, and here we are, and this is the final outcome. So, I guess it sounds like you think there's still things missing, and maybe it's conceivable that the discussions occurred before you were on council. I'm just thinking, maybe you think we didn't go through that level of process.
Well, I know we discussed some things at the study session. I don't, I, I mean, I did read their minutes, but it wasn't that specific, right? So, I don't, you know, I didn't know that they had specifically decided that. But I guess, what I want to understand is, if a committee wants to make a change later, then they can do that. It doesn't have to be as part of their yearly meeting. They can come to us and say they think they want to add a task, and if we need to change the charter, we can decide, council majority can decide to consider that. So, I just, I want all the committees, this is the first time we're doing this, right? So, to understand what the process is, that, you know, and that's why I'm nervous, because this is the first one, and, you know, I want to make sure it's right. It's really an important one for our community.
In point of fact, specifically, the reason why we're having this conversation is because OSPAC took the initiative to say, hey, we're interested in doing a thing. Hey, council, would you listen to us? It's really important to us, to which we said, okay, OSPAC, in that case, let's do the thing.
Right.
And right now, we are doing the thing. And it's not a one-off. If, you know, if next week's or next month's meeting, they came back and said, I know we all came to this consensus, and, but we all have reconsidered, and we think we should go back and forth, then, you know, of course, we're going to listen to that. Of course, we're going to, you know, work with them according to what they think they need in order to get the job done for our community, because that's how we operate. And there's no finality to any process, at least that I can conceive of off the top of my head, you know, until a thing is, you know, there's no finality to anything. It's just a matter of what process leads to what outcome, and how do we process it through? And this has been a rather robust process.
Yeah.
Truly. I do have a question around your notion of the quarry specific plan and whether or not we need to address when something like that comes up specifically, or if it's understood that, of course, OSPAC would have a session of their own in regards to quarry specific plan when that time comes.
Yeah, Councilmember Big Stick, I wanted to make two points. Regarding quarry specific plan discussion, that's not what's agendized tonight, so I would recommend that it's only appropriate to bring that up when the council is talking about.
I hear you. I don't mean to be so specific. It's a matter of if something needs to be inserted. It's a matter of if something needs to be inserted and like type of processes.
Like any specific plan?
Any specific plan or anything that is a plan of that nature where it, it doesn't trigger a state level, um, you have five meetings to do this, otherwise it goes through anyway, kind of a thing. When it's a city initiated, we're not talking about specific development and it's adjacent to OSPAC or there's trails involved that.
What I would respond with is, is sort of what I said earlier is, is that then is the council interested in inserting that kind of language in every committee and commission's charter? So that, that option always exists when you specifically come to that discussion.
I think the other half of that question that maybe I did not articulate adequately is what processes are currently in place that perhaps we would not need to worry about adding that language? Is it understood that if it touches OSPAC jurisdiction, of course, say in terms of the quarry specific plan as an example, um, it would naturally find its way there without us needing to think about putting something into the charter? That's the nature of the question, if that makes sense?
So, yeah, and if I'm understanding it correctly, any big study, specific plan, et cetera, in recent years, we have the practice of bringing, what is the public engagement plan? What is the engagement plan to the council? Does a council want to form an ad hoc committee? This has been done on, on numerous projects. And that would be the point at which with the engagement plan and how this specific planning process is going to occur, that the council could speak specifically to committees and commissions. I think maybe if I'm not mistaken, that in the Sharp Park specific planning process, the council pointed out specifically three bodies, three advisory bodies that were to be part of the review process related to that specific planning process. So I, I would just, I'm just recommending that rather than be specific in any one committee or commission's charter, that, that, that's a prerogative that always exists to the council. The other point that I wanted to make, which was the, the question more directly that Council Bowles asked, is just remember in the council rules and code of ethics, the process for agendizing an item for council discussion is laid out in the, in the rules. And it's that if any one council member can, you know, and it goes through the, can agendize an item. And if it's, if it's a significant item, as the rules talk about, there's a minimal amount of staff time that's used to put the item on the agenda and the council discusses what the next step would be on that. So at any given time, if a council member wanted to agendize consideration of a charter amendment for a committee or commission, that could be raised, you know, that's a significant undertaking, so it would fall under the two hour rule, be agendized and a majority of the council gets to decide on whether staff resources are going to be spent on revisiting that committee or commission's charter.
Thank you. Mary?
Go ahead. Okay. I think I'm going to wait because I, I think you just, you answered what I was going to ask, but I'm not sure. So let's go ahead. So in that fourth, be it further resolved on packet page 36, it, it says, connects to recommendations contained in the OTSF report to one or more elements in the city's general plan, can we just add or other specific plans that are appropriate to ensure a mechanism exists? Is it, is it a big deal to add that statement and then as directed by council? That's what I heard you say.
Yeah.
Or is that what you were saying should be?
Well, I, I, I first need to hone in on which finding you were talking about. Can you, can you read the beginning of it?
I can. Be it for the resolve during a future annual review implementation of the general plan, the city council will consider whether a general plan amendment that formally connects to the recommendations contained in the OTSF, um, report to one or more elements in the city's general plan. And then I thought what I heard was or others, or other specific plans.
So.
That one little piece.
So as Director Murdock mentioned earlier, this is, this title or this resolved language is fairly specific to the annual review of the general plan. So that's only going to come up once a year around this time when the planning staff prepares the annual housing element report and general plan report. So it's not just a general directive that I think is what council member Bowles is sort of looking for.
Thank you for that clarification.
Could I ask Director Murdock maybe to elaborate on that with an example? If, if something comes to mind?
Certainly. So we, the staff brings forward to the city council each year in February, per prior council direction, the annual report on housing element implementation, which is one of the elements of the general plan with a very specific annual reporting and review process, and then all other elements of the general plan. During that process, there's public input as well. The council gets to consider the city's progress on implementation of the general plan and use that process as an opportunity to elevate any issues that we're having in the community that might warrant further work in the general plan to help address them. So for instance, perhaps there's a desire to further promote, you know, non-vehicular transportation. And so maybe there's a direction to look at the circulation element, to figure out if there are policies we can revise or add to bolster the city's support for biking, walking, et cetera, and de-prioritizing, you know, automobile transportation, for example. So it's sort of one on the fly example, but that's an opportunity where issues can be elevated and work on the general plan directed if there's a need to address an emergent community priority.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, if I may, address the general overall involvement of OSPAC in many things, even though we're not specifying necessarily what each of them is, there is a, the last, second to last be it resolved on packet page 36 is broad and it includes reference to what city manager said a minute ago about us bringing OSPAC into, you know, to engage and collaborate with city staff, other city committees, city commissions and Pacifica Land Trust, as it mentions, in furtherance of its authorized activities. So it seems like that's the general purpose, may get involved in other things statement?
Maybe, but authorized activities seems like that would have to be a list, right, of, of what they're authorized to work on and if, but that's, we don't mention that.
Defined in the charter at the beginning.
But does it say specific plans anywhere? The, the other thing I just, I wanted to ask, and we talked about this a bit at the study session, was about their purview. Um, I've been in a number of, you know, planning commission meetings presenting my own projects where sometimes the commissioners ask questions that really have nothing to do with their purview. Like, why is that bathroom so close to the kitchen? And, and, you know, OSPAC's purview would not be to review the building design or the massing, but to look at the site plan and fencing and animal corridors and, you know, connection to trails. Like, would it be helpful to actually have a more specific definition of what their purview is so that it's less intimidating for a developer that you're just going to bring this in and they can comment on anything in this meeting because it's not very well-defined?
I think it was at the same meeting, perhaps it was a different meeting. I don't think I get to that many OSPAC meetings, but there was discussion about a letter of invitation because it is a voluntary. And my, I believe that they discussed and I know they were going to have a draft of that letter. So perhaps in the body of that letter, it gives some scope or shape to the developer of what are you talking about? You know, I don't know because I haven't seen the letter, but it seems reasonable that it could define it in that context.
Yeah, I think it was almost entirely the intent of that item to address what Mayor Potem Beckmeyer outlined, which is to explain the benefits of, of an applicant coming so that they can give feedback on those kinds of issues. The specific content, as noted, has not been developed. It's one of the follow-on implementation steps that would come from this charter update if it were to be adopted in its current form, to articulate and outline those within this broader framework of what the authorizing resolution is intended to do and the types of issues that are identified in the open space task force report, for example. So not an open-ended list of issues, right? But issues related to open space and habitat and hillsides and the like that are described in the open space task force report primarily, which the resolution indicates should continue to be the guiding document for OSPAC's work. And I would say by extension, the, the types of issues they ought to engage in, not is the bathroom too close to the kitchen, but, you know, is this building, could it be placed someplace else to open up a broader, you know?
We need a little more setback to the creek or, you know, things like that.
Something along those lines, correct.
Right. Um, yeah, so you, you feel like it's enough to have that in the letter, that it doesn't need to be in their charter?
I do. I think it could be too limiting to try to do that now. And I think that there's a process set up to allow OSPAC to delve into that and for staff to offer feedback and suggestions and for them to craft the letter that they think expresses what they're appointed to do.
Okay. Um, sorry, two more questions. So, um, and, and I, and I asked this in my, my written questions too, but, um, you know, obviously sometimes an applicant chooses not to come. And let's just talk about the quarry, for example. Um, they're, you know, they're talking about adding new trails that connect to other trails, you know, which are normally part of their purview. Is, is there not an opportunity, you know, on some limited scope item, and this is really a legal question, I guess, for, for the committee to discuss this? You know, as part of, I mean, staff, staff gives a presentation of the projects that are coming up, you know, in their meeting at the beginning that's not necessarily agendized. But is there an opportunity for them to have some discussion on, on key things like that, you know, in their meeting?
So I would defer to Director Murdock on how those things are agendized. I thought they were agendized.
Right. So on the, uh, OSPAC's agenda, there is a, a staff update on sites within the open space task force report. We provide a brief informational update. It's not a deliberation item. And so that's why there's limited detail in terms of the extent of that, but it's a one-way informational update on the status of the projects, where they are in the process and so forth.
Okay, so they, but they, they don't deliberate, but they could ask some questions or, or so, and, and then I guess come back and comment as individuals if the project is coming.
Well, that item is not set up to be a deliberative format that.
Right.
Directs feedback, you know, back through staff to applicants. It's meant to provide a status update on where they are in the process.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that there's an opportunity for them, for, for planning staff to hear their feedback if they have a particular concern or question, knowing that nothing is binding, but, um, so I, so I don't know if that's really in, in here or not. Um, yeah, I, I, I wish I'd gone back and looked. I, at some point I sent to them Woodside's, Woodside has a really good open space committee and I think they require developers to come on particular issues. But I, I don't have that ready here for tonight. And then the other, the other item that they asked a lot about was whether their meetings could be in Zoom again and because they got a lot more community members attending. And I'll just tie this to our later discussion about the IT. And the answer I got was that allowing hybrid meetings for committees and commissions will need to be determined by council policy and is allowed by state law. So while we're on the subject of OSPAC, Denise, do you see any reasons not to have OSPAC be available on Zoom if we, if we have the capacity in our, in our meeting rooms?
Yeah, thanks. As it, as it relates to, to OSPAC in this conversation, as you mentioned, it's part of the budget conversation. So the Zoom capability will be set up in those conference rooms. The issue of whether committee and commission meetings that are meeting in that room will be hybrid Zoom in-person meetings, the reason I say that that's going to be a future council policy decision is because there are staff resource impacts to conducting that and, and orchestrating that technology. And the, the state law pertains to the committee or commission members themselves and their attendance on Zoom and they're not allowed except for under certain exceptions. But for public participation, I, I think is maybe mainly what you're talking about. That's going to need to be a future council, you know, during COVID, we talked about this every few months, it seemed like, but that'll need to be a future council discussion about what direction you, you want to head regarding committee and commission meetings. And part of that discussion is going to have to be staff analysis about, well, who is staffing those meetings? Are they, you know, how, how much does it take to man the public comment, cue, et cetera, that type of stuff? That's what was intended by that response.
Okay, so, so we need to agendize that discussion somehow? I mean, we'll be, we'll be moving to the new facilities, you know, in a few months, right? So when?
Yeah, I would anticipate that at, at some point, the council's going to need to engage that. And when we, when we have the, the ability to analyze what the, the impact is, the pros and cons of doing that.
Yeah. Okay, well, I can talk about it again as we talk about the budget item. Um, okay, well, those, those are my questions. So I don't know if we actually changed anything. Yeah, I just, again, I just wish I knew.
So you're proposing that we bring this back at a different date or are you good with your answers? And does that have to be a motion in a second?
So if, if a council member is interested in continuing the item, they can make a motion to continue the item either to a date certain or a date uncertain, and that motion would need to be seconded and supported by a majority of the council.
Okay.
Can I comment on that? I just think, I've been working on this for a very long time. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to continue the item.
I concur.
Likewise.
I do too. It started in April of '22 and we've, there've been, I mean, if you look at that list of all those meetings that have been had regarding this and the fact that they voted six to zero. I know that you had good questions and I think in the future, maybe we can consider some of those items in changes, but I also, I know I'm deliberating, aren't I? Um, but I would agree. So, so there is a lack of a second?
I don't think there was a motion. No motion was made.
No motion. Okay. So.
I move that we approve consent agenda item two.
Second.
Please vote.
Waiting for one, one more vote. I'm going to abstain. Okay. So the motion made by Mayor Potem Beckmeyer and seconded by council member Big Stick passes with a vote of four to zero with Bowles abstaining.
Thank you. And now, sorry. Yes. Now as public comment and this portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that's not on the agenda, any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized during this time provided, however, only items not on the agenda will be addressed. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If comments do not address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter. If the warning is not followed, the mayor will direct city clerk to cut off the microphone. Council members shall not enter. Councilmembers shall not enter into debate with speakers under public comment or on items not on the posted agenda. A minimum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. And are there any public comments? Seeing no one in the audience, Emily.
We have one raised hand. It is for Summer Lee.
Okay, Summer, go ahead.
Hi, this is Summer Lee. I just want to thank Councilmember Christine Bowles. I think as a public, listening in the last few years, there's been the sentiment that there needs to be more transparency and more listening to the public. And tonight, like many other sessions, I feel that she's the only one advocating for our public. And I see a pattern where City Manager Woodhouse says there's not enough staff resources when it comes to any issue or any movement towards engaging more public. And I see Big Stick, Councilmember Big Stick, always referring and submitting to staff when his job is actually to represent the public also. So I really hope that this future City Council just keeps thinking of the public as part of their deliberation and their decision-making. And thank you, Christine Bowles, for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer.
We have additional raised hands. The next is for Irene Lee.
Okay, go ahead, Irene.
Hi, this is Irene from Manor. I also want to thank Christine Bowles for bringing up issues that, for the general public, and that, just to reiterate that you guys are representing us, the public, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a third raised hand. It is for Cliff Lawrence.
Cliff, go ahead, Cliff.
Hi, Cliff Lawrence here. Hope you can hear me.
Yes.
And I also want to thank Christine Bowles for stepping up and recognizing that there still may be issues with this charter that maybe deserve attention, however that process went. On a separate note, on the quarry, briefly, I've since last Monday night have noted that they made a LLC specifically for this project. And I've also noted that all of the money that they take in is on the front end of the project, and it's only on the back end of the project that we expect to see the benefits of the so-called reclamation. This is tailor-made for them to walk away from, and I think we should all be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two additional raised hands. Next is for Sue DeGree.
Go ahead, Sue.
Hi, sorry, thank you so much. Yes, can you hear me? I have some confusion.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so I commend Councilwoman Bowles, too. I had forgotten about the study session part, and so that all council members be aware that it was coming on consent. I know it's a 72 hours and all that good stuff, but this was a confusing evening, I'm afraid, for that issue. But it brings to mind my other issue, which is always my issue, is that please keep in mind, because I know we're supposed to be worried about staff and on council times and everything, but the number one issue is always the public at large. And the public at large and just IT is not enough. And so when you're considering hybrid meetings, could you please make sure that the priority, the top priority, is how you're going to outreach to people? And just through media is just not enough. And I thank those citizens who use signs and flyers for the quarry. You could see the difference. Issues matter, but if you don't even know that an issue is around, and I know the protocol about consent and all that good stuff, but the number one protocol is making sure that the public has the ability to know what's going on. And please, it has to be flyers and signs. And expense shouldn't matter. That's the first priority. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sue.
The next hand is for Ellen Hage.
Okay, go ahead, Ellen.
Good evening, City Council. I'm speaking once again as a resident of Pacifica and as an American citizen, calling on you as my representatives to support the peace resolution that was recently presented at City Council meetings. Our taxes are paying for the catastrophe that is unfolding before our eyes in Gaza since the tragic and horrible events of October 6th. Today, the UN Security Council passed the first resolution calling for ceasefire in Gaza.
Bless you.
Governor Newsom is also calling for a ceasefire. I urge you, please, reconsider and support the peace resolution that was presented to you by the Pacifica Peace People. We must do all we can to bring peace to the people of Israel and Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an additional raised hand for Delia.
Delia, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. This is Delia McGrath, and I just want to keep before your eyes and ears, as well as the public, the importance of paying attention to the situation in Gaza. Children are dying of starvation. We need to speak out. Your amazing voices could be heard. And I really would, as Ellen just mentioned, ask you to reconsider remaining silent or finding a way to speak on behalf of the people of Pacifica who do not want to turn away from the suffering. And as our tax dollars are being used, we need to see the connection between what we do in Pacifica, what our issues are, and what is happening in Gaza. And just one last thing. If Pacifica, for whatever reason, in the future was being invaded by, for whatever reasons, our children were dying, hospitals were getting bombed, think about that and how you would so appreciate people from all over the world seeing the connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Delia.
We have a second raised hand from Sue DeGree.
Sue, you've already spoken in public comment, so we're not going to take your call. Thank you, sorry.
There are no other, oh, sorry.
I know that on occasion, a speaker will raise their hand twice when they have somebody else in their household who wishes to speak on the same account.
Is there someone else in your household, Sue, who wishes to speak?
I'll unmute her to answer that question.
So sorry, that was an error. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other raised hands.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment and bring it back to council.
And Madam Mayor, just to confirm, there's no public speakers in the audience here tonight, right?
Yes, we did that first, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so council communications. Who wants to start? It says me. It's not me.
Oh, it's my talking button. There.
Okay, Sue.
But you could start.
No, I'll finish.
Okay, just a few meetings I wanted to relay to you and a couple of updates. The Economic Development Committee meeting on the 12th of March, they processed a bit about the thing we just reviewed with them. And the important thing I wanted to mention is the Blues and Brews Event, April 27th from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Palmetto, roughly at Montecito, in that vicinity. After that, I had a wonderful opportunity to do a read-aloud at Sunset Ridge School on Friday morning, the 15th, and busy day on the 16th with a community meeting on coastal issues that was held at NICS in the morning. And then I went straight away to the Pacifica Youth Summit at IBL, which was really great and focused a lot on wellness and self-care. And I have taken some of those things to heart. It was really great. I couldn't stay the whole time because I had to do self-care by taking care of this other obligation I had that day. And I think that's pretty much it. There was, oh, we had our Committing Commission interviews, of course. Oh, I did also have a chance to attend the Heal Project fundraiser last Wednesday night, which was fabulous, at Pasta Moon. I love that project. It's teaching kids how food is grown and why it matters, and with school trips, and it's just great, a really good, a good one. And there was a Sea Level Rise Local Government Working Group meeting that I did not need to attend because it was a working group day for staff that are working on some, consolidating some notes and plans to bring forward at the next meeting. So that's all I have.
Christine.
I know, one more thing you did, Sue. Because we were there together, the Pacifica Education Foundation Gala fundraiser, which was super fun.
The president's breakfast, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you talked about that. That's the gala. I wrote it down, in fact, right here.
Yeah, that was a really fun event up at the Skyline Center overlooking Pacifica. Most of us were also at this really fun event with our police department honoring our officers for heroic measures in the terrible stabbing incident last year, and then celebrating and swearing in for new hires, which is really exciting. And then I've been continuing meetings with Solutions for Supportive Homes in the Pacifica Resource Center about affordable housing projects in town and potential new facilities for the PRC, which is very exciting, too. Had a good meeting with Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. So one thing I wanted to announce tomorrow, actually, tomorrow night, 7:00 to 8:30 at the police station, there's a tsunami preparation class that the police and CERT are putting on. So if anybody's interested, find their website and you can sign up for that. We talked about beach safety.
What time is that at?
7:00 to 8:30. We talked about beach safety again and the desire to have a joint session with PBNR. And then we were talking a little bit more about the idea of working with nonprofits and community-based organizations in town about coordinating some emergency preparedness. And we had a red, sometimes have a Red Cross liaison attending our meetings, and she was telling us afterwards about Halfman May and how well all their nonprofits are organized in that, so they know what resources they have and how to call upon things, you know, in a disaster. And I think it's even more critical for them because they're so isolated further down the coast. But as we were talking, some of the members on our committee are also in Pacificans Care, and it turns out their charter actually talks about emergency preparedness, too. So anyway, some good conversations starting to happen around that possibility. I attended or watched the Planning Commission meeting on the quarry and really want to thank the planning commissioners and all the residents who attended. Everyone's good questions through that. And then Saturday, I went to our Council of Cities Dinner at the San Mateo County Regional Operations Center, which is the disaster preparation center for the county. So we got a tour from Dr. Shruti Dhakupar, who's there, who's just a fabulous woman, doctor, who's leading that organization, got to see all their screens and how everyone's got a seat with their own vest that's not assigned to one person because the people could change or be on vacation, right? But it's a task and how they're all equipped to stay the night and have their food bags and so forth. We asked her what kept her up at night, and it's really the fear of the big earthquake that we all know is coming, but it just seems like it's just out there that we don't really want to think about and plan too much. But she said, really, in a major regional disaster like that, it's not just having enough food for three days, it's really seven days, because it's going to take a long time for the federal government to be able to come in. And just the importance of knowing your neighbors, having their cell phone numbers, knowing who's a senior or disabled who might need some help. So just really encouraging everybody to reach out to the people around you and/or join CERT, too. And then they have a Map Your Neighborhood program, too, which is really terrific. Because, I mean, our fire and police services are limited, too, so we really need to be responsible for our own communities. And then Warren Slocum spoke, and he said the, he's the head of the Board of Supervisors in his last year. And one report he gave us that they had a financial analyst present to the Board of Supervisors, and he said the economic outlook is actually good for the county in the year ahead. So that was good to hear as we're starting to talk about our budget and our worries. And then Dave Pine was there, also another county supervisor, and he invited the BCDC staff to do a presentation. That's the Bay Conservation and Development Commission. So they're working on sea level rise planning on the bayside, which includes, you know, all the counties all around. Our responsibility is through the Coastal Commission, but they're creating guidance for all the cities, you know, outside of the coast in our region. And some of the things they said was that, just stressing that there's lots of money right now for planning grants for sea level rise. There's no competition now, so basically, you apply and you're going to get it. And money for implementation projects is going to start being available in the next year or two, but that will be competitive. And so, again, encouraging cities to do their planning per SB 272, us through our local coastal plan, so that we're in line and with projects identified that we can then get money for. And then they said there is more money available for projects that have green infrastructure or hybrid with some environmental restoration work also. Some of the things they're really concerned about are with ground level, groundwater levels rising on toxic sites that have maybe been capped, and they're okay now, but as the water rises, that's going to bring all of that up. So I don't know if we have any of that in here in Pacifica, but just different things that you don't think about beyond the water coming in right at the coast. Oh, and then I saw the postcards, the leadership, San Mateo Leadership Council, this program I've been doing for the last eight months is now taking applications for next year's cohort. So this is leadership training for people in government, people in business, people in nonprofits, kind of bringing us all together across the county. It's really a terrific program. So check it out and apply. Thanks.
Thank you. Tiger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So is Ukraine. It's on my mind. I was slightly hurtened to hear that Mike Johnson, I think, is going to allow Congress to vote on a spending package to aid Ukraine. I was also hurtened that the U.S. did not this time object to the UN Security Council ceasefire resolution, because Israel and Gaza are also very much on my mind. I was honored to attend the officer swearing-in ceremony on the 12th, as well as see the life-saving medals given for the life-giving. the life-saving medals given for the life-giving efforts of our police department. So thank you all. Later that night, I attended the Broadmoor Police Protection District meeting to serve my understanding on LAFCO. I attended the Pacifica Resource Center meeting on the thirteenth. Mary was there giving a presentation about Art for a More Peaceful and Just Community, a kindness campaign. Thank you, Mary. They had a clean audit, and they're looking for new board members. There's a date set for the Palma Palooza, which is the big fundraising event for the PRC on the twenty-first of September. It's going to celebrate fifty years of PRC. I urge everyone to get tickets to that. It's going to be a wonderful event and a huge celebration for the fiftieth. Tickets won't be available for several months, but keep it on your radar, save the date. It'll be a big one. And they also have a space on Palmetto, coming together nicely. They're in the planning phase, but it was signed off on by Planning Commission, and that's shaping up nicely. I attended CCAG meeting on the fourteenth, Pi Day. I was just in the audience while our mayor was at the table, but I got to enjoy a presentation about stormwater, which is often a big issue for us in Pacifica. And there was a presentation about vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emission mitigation. And it was Ricardo, Ricardo Ortiz's last meeting on CCAG. He's a, I guess, now former council member of Burlingame, which doesn't specifically pertain to us, except that he happens to be the new branch manager at US Bank. So now when I go to do my banking, I see Ricardo on a regular basis. Mark Simon presented at the Pacifica Democrat Club. It was really good to have his insights. If you don't subscribe to the San Mateo Daily Journal, which I think I'm going to start doing now that the Tribune is entirely online, and when we put out written notice, we're going to be doing it through the Daily Journal, I believe. And I am really quite fond of Mark's column, so it was a joy to see him at the Democrat Club, Club meeting. And then I attended the Youth, Youth Summit that Councilmember Beer and her team of youth put on. And Chief Sarah Sua spoke on the topic of Keep Kind on Your Mind, and it was great to have more insight into what has made our chief, our chief. Took a constituent meeting or two, watched all five hours of the Planning Commission meeting. Christian Murdock, thank you so much for running that meeting. It's amazing to me how much work your team put into it, how much work the Planning Commission put into it. It's a huge hot-button topic for our community, clearly. I would certainly urge the community always to learn a little bit more about the due processes that we must undergo in order to facilitate these meetings we're required to have. But it, it really is amazing how much community turnout there was to inform the deliberative process of the Planning Commission and how much work the Planning Commission did to be ready for that deliberative process. And of course, thank you to staff for making sure that that way was laid clear. Commissioning committees, interviews the other day. Then I did have the LAFCO meeting in which the Broadmoor Police Protection District Municipal Service Review was discussed. That'll be brought back at the next meeting along with the San Bruno Municipal Service Review. Interesting of note, stormwater funding is a big thing in San Bruno, and that I think if they had their druthers, they'd have a better mechanism in place for stormwater funding. And we went over our proposed budget for LAFCO. That's the Local Agency Formation Commission for those who don't follow LAFCO closely. Attended the OSPAC meeting last Wednesday, after OSPAC. They're excited to do tabling at Whale Fest coming up April twentieth, and they unanimously voted to give the 2024 Preservation Award to Julie Lancel, so more on that to come soon. And then I attended the Skyline President's Breakfast. And Friday night, I got to watch the mayor's office with our mayor, Sue Vaterlaus, interviewing our city manager, Kevin Woodhouse. And it was really quite nice to have an informal window into exactly how much the city manager actually does managing the entire city and what his job really is and how much it really entails. And I think, you know, I get to have the front row seat the entirety of the almost seven years now you've been here. But thank you for taking the time to, you know, in a more informal setting, give some insight into how much work you really do. And thank you for how much work you are perpetually doing for our city. I know that sometimes comments come through that aren't overall kind. And it seems like even when there is a critique that may or may not be realistic, it seems like that critique could always be delivered kindly. And so I appreciate certainly the ridiculous amount of work you do and some of the unkind critiques that come through. They're certainly unwarranted. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Okay. I attended so many things, the same things that my colleagues have attended as well, but the police swearing in and honoring of those officers was a really very special event. And so I was really happy to be present there. I attended the EDC meeting, the Economic Development Committee meeting, where we talked about the YFTE data and shop Pacifica. And so I think that's really interesting that that group is really focusing on that and seeing how we can support that program. They finalized the changes to the charter and then the Blues and Brews, which Councilmember Beckmeyer already mentioned, so thank you for that. Councilmember Big Stick mentioned the PRC board when I, I went and presented about Art for a More Peaceful and Just Community. We are still looking for anybody who would like to do any projects around kindness. That would be great. Just come and, and talk to me, or Cindy Abbott at the Sanchez Art Center. I want to thank everybody who helped with the Pacifica Youth Summit. It was a fantastic event, and I especially would like to thank our Chief of Police, Maria Sarah Sua. I see you back there. Thank you so much for coming and sharing yourself with our youth. It was beautiful to have you there, even though we couldn't find you, anything for you, anywhere to put your notes. You did such a great job. So thank you so much. And I also want to thank Park Beaches and Rec for allowing us to borrow some microphones. I want to thank my colleagues for being there and participating with our young people and talking to them. It was really important for them that you were there. PCT, I want to thank PCT always. Thanks, PCT, for everything you do for us here, but also for everything you do for our youth group and for live streaming their podcasts that day. All the little young people, the little third graders who were on the podcast, they felt like, you know, movie stars because they were on TV and they were being interviewed by teenagers. So it was fantastic. So thank you so much. I participated in the Committing Commission interviews. I attended the President's Breakfast at Skyline, which is a beautiful event. I also watched the five-hour Planning Commission, so thank you, everybody, especially Chair Hauser, for running such a, a tight ship. We needed you. I attended the grand reopening at Asian American Recovery Services in South San Francisco. Our colleague, James Coleman, was there, so I got to speak with him a little bit. He was there to give, you know, to give a little certificate to Asian American Recovery Services. Then I also attended Coast Pride's Board meeting, where we are, we're doing a lot of really important work, a lot of anti-racist work. And so we had a healing circle, and something that you said, Councilmember Bowles, in your report out, you said, "What keeps me up at night?" And I think through doing this really deep work that we're just really beginning, I, I think what has been keeping me up at night is that I didn't bring forward the peace resolution that the Pacifica peace people presented to us, because it was actually a really beautiful resolution. I'm, I'm just learning about how my privilege as a white cisgendered person of power sitting up here hasn't felt, I don't know, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but I think I've been afraid of the dissonance and the tension that, that it could bring. It's keeping me up at night. So Deely, if you could please resend me that resolution, I would really appreciate that. There's also something that was said at the Planning Commission meeting, and we got a little feedback about our land acknowledgement. And, you know, if we are going to be saying our land acknowledgement, do we really mean what we're saying about the land acknowledgement? And I absolutely want to say that we do mean what we're saying about the land acknowledgement. I think it's also important for our city staff to be reaching out to the Rama Tushaloni people and the representatives who are coming to our meetings, and so I'm going to encourage that as we move forward, because it's a really important part of all of the work that we do. I think that's it. Thanks.
Okay. I, too, attended many things that other council members were. And the police awards was really amazing. The three men who really saved the woman's life in Valamar. It was really special. And into the new officers, I went, I had Fairmont Homeowners Association, City and County Association of Governments Legislative, where we talk about the, the items being brought forward. There's items on the Brown Act, Complete Streets, Toll upgrades, and banning chemicals in female products. A lot of really interesting items come forward in the legislative that we either support or oppose, and we send everyone letters on what we support and oppose. And it's made up of one person from each city council. So it's, it's got, and one person supposedly from the county, but they never show up. Also, the, the regular board meeting, and that was vehicle miles traveled. I went, before the community meeting, I met with Sam Licardo, who is running for Assembly in our district from San Jose, and walked him around in Rockaway so that he could see what one little section of Pacifica looked like, and talked to him about our issues of sea level rise, of the seawall and Coastal Commission, et cetera. It was a good enlightenment for him. Also went to the community meeting where Matt Larson did a quarry update, Ray Mueller talked, Sam Licardo spoke for a minute, and another Larry Bothan talked about the sea level rise issues, local coastal update plan. I took quite some time there because a lot of people had questions. So I was there for a long time, so I only briefly got to go to the Youth Summit, but I, I did do the podcast. So I felt special. So also, this, the special council. And one of my assignments is the Fogfest Board, and we were all very concerned that there weren't enough people, that Fogfest is basically all volunteer-driven, and there really weren't enough people to go forward. And it was a huge concern, although at this meeting, there was so much energy and new people who are willing to go forward. If you see a fundraiser for Fogfest, please go. Kim LaRolle, who used to own the Longboard Margaritas, is working on doing fundraising events so that we can go forward, because there are a lot of very high expenses for Fogfest. And it really does, it's a really huge, great event for everyone in Pacifica, everyone, and the people who are outside who come. And I just want it to last forever. So if you see fundraisers, please go. I did go to the President's Breakfast also, and I met with a representative from the quarry with his opinions on, on the project. And I also met with Toll Brothers, who's working on the purchase of Seabowl. And I talked to David Zito, who owns, currently owns the Seabowl. The community involvement in planning, I missed the first half hour because I was in another meeting, and there were 247 written public comments. That's great. So the word is getting out, and people do know that we have meetings and they're participating. And I really appreciate everyone from the community speaking. Hopefully, we'll have police officers in attendance next time, but, and the public should know to please, you know, everyone's doing the best they can, and please don't get out of hand. It's, it does, it's not productive. It doesn't help. So I don't mean to sound bossy, but it's true. So I'll conclude, and we'll go to staff communications. And after staff communications, we're taking a break.
Okay. Before we go to staff communications, if I could please just add one thing that I forgot to add.
Yes.
I didn't go on Friday night to Council of Cities because I had the honor of being at the Lions Club Police and Fire Awards Dinner, which our officers that were honored here in Pacifica also received heroism awards, which was very moving, and we're very proud. And it was a really good night for Pacifica.
Well, one second. I forgot about fire. Fire, thank you. All the firemen who showed up at the Youth Summit, it was so impressive. There were so many of them. And I took a picture with all of them, and I look like I'm about this big. But thank you all for showing up.
Thank you, Mayor Vaterlaus, Mayor Potem Beckmeyer, Council, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I had just two communications, but now I just have one because Mayor Potem Beckmeyer just mentioned the award at the Peninsula Lions, Peninsula Council of Lions on Friday. So I, I'll actually just reiterate a, a little bit more. So in addition, it was mentioned by many of the council members that the police department and Chief Sarah Sua held this incredible event here where our newest police officers were sworn in, but also several officers received the Medal of Valor here locally. And then, as Mayor Potem Beckmeyer mentioned, the officers are Officer Robert Martinez, Corporal Travis Meyerhoff, and Detective Corporal Brandon Smith, that were awarded the Valor Award from the Peninsula Council of Lions on Friday. And great picture there with Mayor Potem Beckmeyer and Lion Alan Hale and past president Lion Shirley Gibbs also. So that really was a great showing for Pacifica at that event and, and for, for the, the great valor that those officers showed during that event here, tragic event in Pacifica. The other announcement that I wanted to provide, kind of hot off the presses, and more information will come out in, in coming weeks in a press release, but we found out last week that Pacifica is one of three grand prize winners from the California Association of Local Economic Development, CAL-ED for short, for, for an economic development award statewide. And there's three grand prize winners, and there's three merit winners in three different categories. And we won in the Programs and Promotions category for the Vision 2025 and Beyond Initiative that we've been undertaking for many years. And so it's great recognition of all the hard work, direction from the city council, all the hard work of, of staff in bringing this forward. And I particularly like to thank Assistant City Manager Julia Carter for her work on that, as well as Economic Development Manager Tara Schiff in working to put the application together with Ms. Carter as well. So we will be recognized at their annual conference in Santa Rosa, I think it's Santa Rosa, on April eleventh. And then at a council meeting following that, they will be here to present the award, I believe, is the way it works. And there'll be a press release some point in that. But it's a great recognition of innovative, strategic, long-term visioning, planning work that can be done at a, at a local level for a community like ours. And just happy to announce that. And that completes my communications.
Thank you. We will take... We will take a 10-minute break and come back, well, mine says 9:52. I mean, sorry, 8:52. So come back at 9:02, please. Thank you. What?